Janette Nunez. We have also also from here in Miami is our Commissioner of Education for Florida, Manny Diaz. And from your neighbor to the north in Broward County, one of our school board members, not an easy task, but doing a great job, Daniel Foganoli. Thank you. We have Mike Belacca, who is the CEO of True North Classical Academy and is hosting us here today. Janine Finley, Head of Schools and a former teacher here at True North Classical Academy. Keith Callaway, Associate Director of the Professional Educators Network of Florida. Where is he? Okay. And then we're joined by our Speaker of the Florida House, Paul Renner. Senator Eliana Garcia. Senator Alexis Calatude is here. And then we have Representatives Black, Fabricio, Fernandez Barquin, Lopez, Porres, Rizzo, and Karen Gonzalez Pittman. So, welcome. So, the legislature signee died on Friday and we were able to, they were able to really accomplish, I think, more than anyone's ever done in such a short period of time. So, I want to thank them for all their hard work. I know it's not easy, especially when you cram a lot of it into 60 days. We've been able to already sign a lot of really, really significant legislation even before the signee died. I mean, we were down in Miami-Dade signing the Universal School Choice Education Savings Accounts Bill in March, right out of the gate, and we've been able to do so much more. Today is really a day about doing a lot for teachers in the state of Florida. And this is something that's really important because at the end of the day, you can put money into a school, you can have good standards, you can have all that, but if you don't have a good teacher in the classroom, then you're not going to have kids perform up to their expectations. And so, we're going to be signing a number of pieces of legislation, also announcing improvement of a major budget item, and I think we're really leading the way when it comes to teacher empowerment. So, first things first, I'm still going through the overall budget, but we're approving different items as we go. The legislature this year, a couple of years ago, we put into the budget what we call a categorical for teacher compensation. And what that means is when the money, education money gets sent down to school districts and local communities, they can use that money, but they have to use it to increase teacher salaries. Sometimes you can increase education spending, it may not go to teachers, it may go to other things, administration, all these other things. So, these categoricals have to do that, and we started it a few years ago. First year, we did 500 million, then 550, then last year, 800 million. That was a record, no one's ever done that. This year, I can announce, we are approving what the legislature has provided for our teacher salary categorical for pay increases of $1.05 billion. That's a record for Florida. And that represents an increase of over a quarter of a billion dollars over last year's record. So, that's really, really significant. And if you look just in the five, last five years, we've devoted just from the state over $3.3 billion to increase teacher salaries as well as to bonuses. And so, that's really, really significant. We also, in the budget, you'll see what they did for the FEFP. So, not only do you have the most funding in Florida history, you have the highest per pupil funding in Florida history. And since I became governor, we've actually have $1,000 more per student than we did in 2019. So, even as we've expanded private choice and charter programs, all this stuff, you still have really significant financial support and actually unprecedented financial support for our schools. So, we appreciate that and we're excited to be able to deliver another round of pay increases for teachers. This is also something that will help us as we recruit new teachers into the profession. When we did the categorical, initially, we started focusing on that average minimum salary and we've exceeded what we set out to do there. This year's categorical to pay any increases, it doesn't have to be tied to that as long as they maintain that, but that's important as you try to get people. And I think we were in the bottom half of states for average minimum salary. Now, we're in the top 10 states for average minimum salary. And then with this, they're going to be able to do salaries across the board. So, we're excited about that. We also are going to be signing legislation today to create what we're calling a Teacher Bill of Rights. And part of what we're trying to do is say that teachers have a right to teach in an orderly and safe classroom. They have a right to ensure discipline in the classroom. That's not only for their safety, but also for the safety and learning experience of other students. If you have one person that's constantly disrupting, it's hard for people to be able to do, but we just want to make sure teachers have the protections to be able to do that basic thing. Used to be, you know, used to be, of course, there'd be order in the classroom, nobody would have questioned that. Now, you know, some teachers think if they discipline a student, then somehow they're going to end up being, people are going to go after them for just keeping order. So, we're making sure that they have an ability to do that. We're also empowering them with protection so that if all they're doing is following state law, then they are protected. And what happens is, you know, there are some times when maybe a school board, maybe an administrator or superintendent, they don't like something that the state of Florida has done, and they may not want their teachers to follow that. Well, that's not the way this system works. And if you want to change the policy, go get elected to the legislature like these folks did and try to change it, but you don't just get to veto it. So, if the teacher is just following state law, they're protected and they can't have negative action taken against them, and they also have the ability to report that to the Florida Department of Education so that we can make sure to keep things, to keep things going in the right direction. We also, in that Teachers' Bill of Rights, include, and I've talked about this before, the Heroes in the Classroom Bonus Program. It's a signing bonus for retired first responders and veterans who want to become teachers. We think people that have served in our military have an awful lot to offer. We think people that have worn the uniform, protecting and serving, have a lot to offer. Not everyone wants to do that, but if some want to, well, we want to facilitate that. It's good for the students. It also establishes the Teacher Apprenticeship Program as an alternate pathway for individuals to enter the teaching profession. We talked about this during the campaign. At the end of the day, you learn by doing, and that's not just true with teaching, it's true with a whole bunch of other things. And so, if you have somebody in there who's an apprentice, they're learning and they're doing a good job, you know, that should mean something and that should, that should be something that could get them a pathway. It also establishes the Dual Enrollment Education Scholarship Program so that high school teachers can obtain graduate degrees and credentials necessary to provide dual enrollment coursework to high school students. We really believe that being able to earn college credit is important, and we have these state colleges, we have these ability to do dual enrollment where you're getting college credits before you even graduate high school. So, that Teachers' Bill of Rights is probably the most significant such piece of legislation anywhere in the country, but it gets better than that because we're going to sign SB 256, which is paycheck protection. You know, you have this situation with school unions, you have a right to not do it, but what they do is they provide authorization forms, blanket authorization for deduction, automatic deduction of dues. So, even though a lot of teachers don't do it, many teachers feel pressured to do it. And so, what this bill does is it protects them, it says, no automatic deduction for school union dues. If you want to join, you can, but you write a check and you hand it over. That is going to lead to more take-home pay for teachers because they're not going to have as many deductions in their paycheck. It's also something that's going to allow the state to look at how many people are joining, and if you don't have a sufficient number of joining, then that should not be the bargaining unit, if you don't even represent the majority of people. So, they've changed that threshold to make sure that that's the case, and I think this is going to be something that's really, really significant. We're also signing HB 1537, which is supporting new and aspiring teachers, and it extends the temporary teaching certificate from three years to five years so that we can keep people in the classroom. It eliminates unnecessary bureaucracy and red tape with respect to certification. Sometimes this certification is keeping good people out. We don't want to do that here in the state of Florida. It also creates a system-wide shift from professional development to professional learning and requires the Department of Education to create a web portal of available opportunities. They're also expanding eligibility for temporary certification to more, so more aspiring teachers working towards their credentials that aren't in college settings, and that's important just because it's something that's more attainable for people when you can do that without having to be on a University of campus. The bill also includes something that we were asked to support over the last year, year and a half by folks who were serving in uniform in New York City during September 11th, and that is establishing a 9/11 Heroes Day in honor of those who gave their lives fighting for freedom on September 11th. And so, now, kids in school are going to be learning about people who sacrificed at the Twin Towers and at the Pentagon on September 11th. And you think about it, many of us remember that, and that was kind of a big deal for our country in terms of the last generation, but you look at these kids in high school here, they were not even born when September 11th happened. So, we think it's important that those folks are honored. And then finally, on this bill, we are now going to allow, so right now with like things like Bright Futures, you do the SAT or ACT and then your grades, we are allowing this new classical learning test to also qualify. So, students will be able to submit a CLT score in order to satisfy requirements for Bright Futures. And, you know, basically, our view is, you know, just have one or two companies doing this, let's open it up and let more people compete. So, that's really, really significant. And another one that's good, HB 477, Term Limits for School Board Members. Two four-year terms, eight-year school board, and that's what it should be. And I think that'll make a big, big difference. And then finally, HB 379, this is focusing on social media and devices in classrooms. And so, it gives teachers the authority to establish classroom rules on cell phone and device use during instructional time. I mean, I think that they have every right to say, kids come in, just check your phone at the beginning, at the front of the room, leave it there, learn, and then grab your phone and then go after that. We don't want the kids on the phone the whole time while the teachers are trying to teach. It's not good for, it's rude for the teacher, there's no way you're learning what you need to be learning, and, you know, things like the social media, you know, it can wait. Honestly, it's not that important to be doing, it's much more important what's going on in the classroom. So, we think that that's just common sense. We're also making sure that things like TikTok, which is monitored by the CCP, that that's not something that they're being able to use district servers and Wi-Fi to be able to access. So, they're not going to be able to do that, and I think that that's going to be something that's really, really important. So, I just think that if we look at our kids, being normal kids like kids were prior to social media is important. The social media, it has, it's more problems than it solves, and I think it does more harm than good. And so, let's have our education system be as much about traditional education as we can, and I think reining in the use of this or having, you know, guidelines as the teachers see fit and as the schools see fit, I think is something that's really, really important. Put those devices down and live life normally, and I think we're going to be so much better off if we go down that direction. So, this is, this is a lot of stuff here today, very productive day to, for education. Of course, we've already done a lot in this legislative session, and we've got more coming down the pike with a lot of the stuff we're doing with higher education, which is really, really exciting. So, I'm just glad that we have a lot of folks in the state of Florida, in the legislature, as well as in our administration who take this seriously. I think these are going to be really, really significant pieces of legislation, and I think the pay increase is going to be really, really significant as well. So, when you're ranked number one in education by U.S. News &amp; World Report, which we were, came out last week, you know, not a lot of people wanted to report that because, you know, they didn't like the narrative on that, but the reality is, we were number one on that. Reality is, if you look at the most recent NAEP results from 2022, the first post-COVID results, Florida was third and fourth respectively in fourth grade reading and fourth grade math. And that wasn't true a generation ago, and now we're basically the highest large state and we're the only diverse state that's in the top, top five as well. So, that's a testament to the people that are working hard in our school system. It's a testament to schools like True North, which is offering a product that parents are responding to. It's also a testament to a lot of the choice options that we've provided over the years in the state of Florida to parents. So, all in all, a lot of good things happening. We obviously are going to continue moving the ball forward, and that's exactly what we're doing here today. Okay, Speaker Renner, come on up.
It is great to be here at True North, and we're kicking off the beginning of a celebration of the most consequential legislative session that Florida has ever had in its history, and I believe any state has ever had in its history. And a big piece of that pie is the education piece, and this is only a small portion. The Governor mentioned the over a billion dollar, since he's been governor, that we've devoted to teacher salary increases, universal choice on issue after issue. And because of that, we're already now number one in education overall before these bills get passed. And these bills provide extra resources to our teachers to do the great work that they do, better rules of the road for our students to make sure they're focused on the classroom. And that's because we have a governor that knows his True North and a legislature that knows their True North and stands with courage on issue after issue. I said after we concluded the session that the biggest winner of this session is children and our defense of childhood, and our education agenda has been a big, big part of that. And that's thanks to the great governor we had and the great legislators we have here. You have an amazing Miami delegation all across this front row here. And I also want to thank Michael Belacca, who's a former colleague of mine in the Florida House. You guys have an amazing leader here, and it was good to see some of you in Tallahassee recently, but what a great education, a classical education that you're receiving. One of the other things we did is make sure charter schools are being treated fairly when it comes to the monies that they receive. And so, again, this is just a little piece of the overall education pie that we celebrate today because there's so much to celebrate about this session. Thanks to our governor and our great legislature. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, the Miami-Dade delegation does do a good job. I mean, you know, they've got to keep Rizzo in line, that is not easy to do, so I give them, I give them a lot of credit, I mean, when you got to deal with. All right, our Lieutenant Governor, Janette Nunez.
Well, good morning, it's great to be here. Thank you, Governor, for coming to True North Classical Academy to sign quite a number of bills. We're extremely honored that you would come and pay a visit here, and for me in particular because I am a True North mom, like so many of you. And I know it's been mentioned already, but I think it bears repeating. True North is one of the most sought-after, highest-performing schools, not only in Miami-Dade County, but in the entirety of the state of Florida. They have a consistent record of exceptional academic achievement, they've been ranked number one in the state for K-8 math, number two in the state for K-8 reading, number two in terms of algebra and geometry students in the Miami-Dade County area, and 98% of their students are proficient in civics, and I know that's important to you, Governor. True North is also ranked as a top 10 school amongst all K-8 charter and traditional public schools. So, so much to be proud of, but in addition to that, they build good character, they insist on virtues, and they're focused on a classical liberal arts education. And in fact, in the building across the way from the gym here, there's a quote on the outside of the building that says, "To strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." And I would say that's the embodiment of True North students, and after thinking about it, I think it's the embodiment of a certain governor from the free state of Florida. And not just to talk about the academics because we know that's so important, but also to talk about their athletics. They've got a great athletics department here, their football team went to the state semifinals, their tennis team, both girls and boys, won the championship for tennis. We've had so many of our athletes up there, I think over 90% of the student body participates in one of the FHSAA sports, and they've only been an FHSAA member for a couple of years. So, a lot of great things that are coming from True North, and we're so excited again that you would be here. And I think it is fitting that the Governor would sign, I don't know, is this a record for you, Governor, the most amount of bills signed in one, in one spot? But what I'll say is unfortunately, what we've seen throughout the county and in other counties throughout the state of Florida is that the education unions have been turned into political weapons. They've been not only spreading misinformation on things like the book ban hoax that we have succinctly debunked, but we also, we want to make sure that teachers at the end of the day have money that goes into their pockets. So, we don't want anyone messing with our teachers' money, that's why we are signing this bill that the Governor referenced about teachers' dues. And we also want to bring transparency and accountability. We want to make sure that those union bosses are being transparent to their membership in terms of how much they are earning. We think it's outrageous, some of the salaries that are paid to those that have fought tooth and nail during COVID to keep kids out of the classroom. So, we're excited about this transparency provision in the bill, and we also want to make sure that we continue to highlight the important work of teachers. So many teachers in the audience and standing that I've had the pleasure of knowing, and they've invested and poured into these students. And so, for the fourth year in the row, this governor is making sure that teachers in our state get raises, and this year, a billion dollars for teacher pay that can be used not only for starting teachers, but as school districts see fit. So, I think that was something extremely important, again, the Speaker, the President, and so many legislators that are here that have been champions on that issue. I know the Governor mentioned the CCP bill that he signed yesterday along with the TikTok ban, making sure that Florida, again, is leading the nation in terms of combating the Chinese Communist Party influence. I can promise you that if the CCP is looking to gain a foothold, it will not happen in this state and not under this Governor's watch. Ultimately, we believe in supporting our teachers, our students, our parents, administrators, and those that are dedicating to finding the good, the true, and the beautiful, which is something that I know True North values. And again, as been said by the Speaker, the Governor, we will always fight to strive for our parents, our students, our teachers, always finding True North. It's an honor and a privilege to be here.
Manny Diaz.
Thank you, Governor. It's great to be back here in Miami with you and signing so many bills. I spent 10 years in the legislature, I don't think I've ever seen this much education policy passed, and this is just one stop. Congratulations to my former colleagues in the legislature. And as the Governor said, Florida's number one in education according to U.S. News &amp; World Report. That is thanks to the bold leadership of our education governor, Ron DeSantis. Regardless of what is, the narrative is, regardless of what they say, this governor's going to do the right thing every time, and that's making sure that he's putting our students first, our teachers first, and our parents first. And he's supported educators from day one with this initiative to create a salary allocation for teachers that never existed before this governor came along. It was always part of the mix. He made it important, and now, thanks to that, over $3 billion governors for teacher, that is an incredible, incredible thing. Today's record funding for teacher will help recruit the best of the best, keep the best of the best, and also with the other things that the Governor mentioned, our heroes in the classroom, the dollars allocated to recruit these folks into the classroom, and if they go into an area of high need, they get an additional $1,000 tacked on top of that. The apprenticeship program for teachers to learn hands-on in the classroom and have a mentor teacher earn $4,000 to have the ability to impart knowledge and improve the teaching profession. That's incredible. Those things alone could be an event, and it's incredible that they're all together here. Teachers having the right to control their own salaries and transparency in what's taken out of their paychecks. They work very hard every day, but it does us no good to increase these salaries if we're going to allow these things to be taken out of their paychecks in the dark. And so, we're making it harder today for unions to take those out of those paychecks and for, at least for teachers to understand what's being taken. Finally, having been in the classroom myself, you know, back in those days when, I can't call it anything else, but when it was normal, it was expected that teachers were respected, that there weren't devices interrupting classrooms. And I remember the press conference before session when the Governor mentioned this and said, "We shouldn't have devices and cell phones interrupting teachers in the classroom." Teachers should walk into the classroom every day knowing that they're respected and if they have to intervene, not be worried about their jobs to keep the safety of their kids, and also be able to comply with state laws without having a rogue school board or administration trying to get back at them. So, for that, I thank you, Governor. Thank you for bolstering the standing of our teachers and elevating the teacher, teaching professor today. I am incredibly excited to be able to implement all of these things, and I'll say a couple of words in Spanish for the Spanish media to say.
Okay, Janine Finley.
Thank you. Today, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Governor DeSantis for visiting our school and making Florida number one for the school choice in nations. We are honored to have you here and deeply appreciate your support. Charter schools like True North wouldn't be possible in many states, but here in Florida. We are not only able to operate, but we are also supported and valued for what we bring to the educational landscape. Our True North schools are the top academic-ranked schools in Miami, but more importantly, our focus is on building character and virtue in each and every one of our students. We want to create good, noble citizens that contribute to our great republic. I also want to take a moment to thank Governor DeSantis for his support for professional development and our new and aspiring teachers. Having worked in other charter schools myself, I know firsthand the limitations of district-type training where professional development is more of a box-ticking exercise. However, at True North, we take a different approach by matching professional learning to what our teachers need to continue their certification and improve their classroom instruction using high-impact teaching strategies to engage all of our scholars. At True North, we believe the value of continuous improvement as well and working with our teachers to achieve excellence. Growth is a process that requires constant reflection and feedback. To support this process, we offer a unique instructional coaching model and classroom observation opportunities for our teachers, including videotaping some of their lessons. And through these observations, our teachers receive feedback, one action step at a time, that is tied to our continuous improvement program. I also want to highlight the positive impact of the extension of temporary certificates that was mentioned earlier from three to five years, especially for those that are in content areas that they specialize in. These teachers have a passion for education, but they might not necessarily have the educational background or experience in the classroom. background or experience in the classroom. And this extension provides our teachers with more time to focus on improving their crafts and refining their classroom instruction through weekly coaching sessions. Our teachers can now pursue their professional certification without the added stress of taking online courses or studying for tests in such a short period of time. I want to thank our governor and our leaders for the changes that will positively impact us and the students that they serve. Once again, thank you for your leadership and support for education.
Okay, Daniel Foganholly.
Well, good morning, everyone. Oh, come on, this is South Florida. Good morning, everyone. My name is Daniel Foganholly, Broward County School Board Member for District 1. I'm proud to say I am a two-time DeSantis appointee, the first ever Brazilian-American to serve on the Broward School Board, and the first ever Brazilian-American to be appointed in this state. And that's thank you to our great governor. Thank you, Governor. Now, what the governor did for me is exactly what we are doing for our educators and the teachers across this state today, empowering them. See, empowering our teachers is crucial because they're the ones that shape the minds of the leaders of tomorrow. Today, we empower our teachers to make the right decisions to protect our scholars. No teacher should ever second-guess about making right decisions or breaking up a fight to make sure our kids stay safe in the classroom and in our hallways. Today, we're giving power back to our teachers. And let me say this, the governor said it well when we talk about the mobile apps because we're dealing with problems today that we haven't dealt with in a long time, and that's distraction. So we're empowering our teachers to be able to set boundaries and make the rules in their classroom to make sure that our kids are focused, learning, less dancing and more advancing, and making sure that we're preparing them to be the world changers we need them to be tomorrow. So that is why today is going to be a great day. And I want to say thank you to our legislature for a busy but successful session. We thank your governor for continuing to push our state to be leaders and what a state should look like. We thank you for continuing to push us to being a beacon of hope, a beacon of freedom across this country. And I don't know about you guys, but I am looking forward to making America look like Florida. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
All right, we'll get it done. Whoever wants to come up here.
Yeah, I've never had this many, for sure. I think a lot. Bill 1, 253, touch me. Is it the eight or the nine? Nine?
Don't look.
Five, seven, eight. Bill? No. No, that's, I think that's, that's Bill Wright's. That's Bill Wright's. That's what it's always been. It's always Pittman. It's always Pittman. Number two. That's number three. Just this one. That was mine. That's mine. That's mine. It's Rizzo. Who's this one? That's mine as well. That's Rizzo's too. That's a big one. Yes, sir. That's got a lot. Lots of, lots of, lots of amendments. Mike, you gotta get one of those. Thank you, sir. And finally, the technology. Grab one for Brad. Grab one for Yeager. Grab a pen for Yeager. And ask all the kids up there to take out their cell phones, but I guess that's sort of anathema. That's sort of anathema to the bill, right?
Teachers, teachers here. What kind of your government? Yeah. 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 Hey, toss. Hey.
There you go, toss. Hey. All right. Hold on. There you go. It's a lot of them. It's pounding on your shoulders. There you go. It's a lot of them. There you go. Thank you, sir. There you go. There you go. Thank you. Hey.